To help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, City Council as well as board and commission meetings will continue to be close to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-Wave, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on City's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/myclandale, and on Apple TV and Roku and Amazon Fire devices using a free app called Screenwave and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. Now, I'm going to conduct a roll call. Committee Member Amirian?
Present.
Committee Member Kedikian?
Present.
Committee Member Manning?
Here.
Committee Member Masias?
Here.
Committee Member Michaels?
Michael?
Present.
Present.
Committee Member Molano?
Molano?
Here.
Committee Member Nelson? Committee Member Wolfson?
Here.
Committee Member Finch?
Here.
Committee Member Vans?
Here.
Committee Member Zakarian?
Here.
Committee Member Paulus?
Here.
Committee Member Bain?
He was present, he just stepped away.
Item one, regular business agenda, 1A. The agenda for the February 22, 2022 Blue Ribbon Pension Review Committee Special Meeting was posted on February 18, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item number two, oral communications. We do not have callers at this time. Item number three, minutes, 3A, approval of the minutes from the February 7, 2022, regular meeting.
I have a very, very minor correction. On page 2, the 1, 2, 3, the fourth paragraph, and the first line word, "further" should be "future." Manning notes that under Agenda Item 6, we can bring up and vote on items for future agendas.
Okay, got it.
As I said, very, very minor.
Yeah. Any other proposed changes to the minutes? Okay.
I don't have any changes, but I do have a clarification, because these minutes are almost verbatim recitations of the actual meeting. I think just for the record, these are just summary, but the actual meeting itself is the exact minutes of the meeting, in my opinion. Just a clarification there. A lot of work is going into this, just repeating verbatim what was said at the meetings. Just want to say that, that's all.
I trained him that way. But yeah, it's understood, of course, that these are just a summary, and obviously, we have the videos of the meetings themselves, which speak for themselves.
So with that, I move.
Okay, thank you. Can we get a second?
One second.
Okay, so this is as amended with the one-word change from Mr. Manning. So can we get a vote?
Committee Member Amirian?
Yes.
Bain?
Yes.
Kedikian?
Yes.
Manning?
Yes.
Masias?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Molano?
Yes.
Nelson? Wolfson?
Yes.
Finch?
Yes.
Vans?
Yes.
Zakarian?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number four, business items, 4A, presentation from Ted Seidel, forensic audits of pension fund.
Okay, let me do just a very brief introduction of... First of all, I should get your names. I should be able to pronounce this right. Is it Seidel or Seidel? You're muted, I think.
Seidel.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you. That's great. Thank you so much. So, Mr. Seidel, we're very lucky to have him. He has spent more than three decades pioneering pension forensics, searching out excessive and hidden fees, conflicts of interest, and transparency problems. He is a noted whistleblower in the field of pension and noted forensics expert in the area of pensions as well. He is a lawyer, although judging by his background, I would say he spent more time in the financial realm than in the lawyer realm. Anyway, he's very well-known. He's the author of a number of books, including one that deals directly with pension forensics. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Ted. We have, just so you know, timing-wise, I think that it's... Have maybe, if you have maybe a half hour to kind of explain what you've done, and et cetera, and then give us some time for the group to ask questions.
Okay, great. Thanks, John. And thanks for inviting me. I have generally unaware of groups doing what you've done, which is you have a pension problem, and you've gone out to the world asking people to give you input on what to do about it. And I think that's fantastic. Of course, virtually every city, county, state in America has a public pension problem, but they're not doing what you're doing. They're not going out giving a diversity of opinions. So I commend you for doing that. As John mentioned, I'm a former attorney with the Securities and Exchange Commission, and won a record $78 million whistleblower award from the SEC a few years ago. I've written two books, Who Stole My Pension, which is about how pensions are being looted globally, and then How to Steal a Lot of Money Legally actually talks about the mechanism for doing the stealing. I've done over a trillion in forensic investigations of retirement plans, primarily public pensions. I most recently completed a forensic investigation of the $100 billion Ohio Teachers Pension System, which was crowdfunded by 30,000 schoolteachers in Ohio, members of the Ohio Retired Teachers Association. So anyhow, the focus of my forensic investigations are... Before I go on, I want to mention in Who Stole My Pension, at the back is a chapter about CalPERS. And the chapter is called "CalPERS: America's Largest Public Pension Is No Role Model." And for decades, CalPERS was often referred to as the gold standard for public pension management. But that reputation has long since been tarnished. And so the point that I would make is that I don't believe CalPERS is a well-managed pension at all. I think it's terribly managed, as a matter of fact. So to the extent that you participate in CalPERS, that's a problem, in my opinion. But we can talk more about that later, if you'd like. My forensic investigations focus upon conflicts of interest, which are pervasive in the financial services industry, hidden and excessive fees. These are fees that are not clearly disclosed and are rarely understood by pensions or staff, and require quite a bit of work to ferret out. Fiduciary breaches, these are... Many of the investments that pensions are involved with today have very customized structures. And if you take a deep dive into what the documents say, there are a lot of business practices that are described in the documents that are not appropriate for pensions, and actually amount to fiduciary breaches. And the final thing that I look at is violations of law. So I've been involved with the money manager... Next year, I will have been involved in forensic investigations of money managers for 40 years. I started in 1983, straight out of law school, working for the SEC, regulating money managers. And so it'll be 40 years next year. And I'm really the only one who does this type of forensic work. So I guess I would... I have a prepared presentation for you. If you all have any questions, welcome you asking those questions. My forensic investigations are largely public. I've sent John about six or eight, each of which is about 100 pages long. The Rhode Island Pension Fund, North Carolina, City of Jacksonville Police Pension Fund, Ohio, there's a bunch of others that are generally available on the internet. Then there are other investigations that I've done, of course, are sensitive and are not public. But the ones that are available give you a pretty good idea of my findings and my theories. And Who Stole My Pension also describes what my findings have been generally. But the investigations show that there are substantial governance problems with public pensions. Public pensions are not governed by ERISA, do not have the same protections that ERISA provides to corporate pensions, this comprehensive federal law. There is no comprehensive federal... There is no comprehensive law that applies to public pensions. There's no state law or any other law that really addresses all the questions that arise. Another problem is, of course, that the boards of these pensions are consists of laymen who aren't familiar with the investment industry. So the lack of regulation and the lack of effective oversight essentially means that Wall Street is free to run wild, run rogue with pension assets. And that's why public pensions are generally regarded on Wall Street as being the dumbest investors in the room. So I don't know if you all have any questions, be happy to answer them. Please, go ahead.
Sure, let's do... Okay, we have a question from Zara Amirian.
Thank you, Mr. Holtzman. Mr. Seidel, thank you so much for joining us and offering your time. So you mentioned that structurally, there are kind of issues. For a city like Glendale, what are, in your mind, reasonable solutions, considering that many of these pension agreements are baked into the law and are difficult to extricate yourself from if you chose to do so? What are some alternatives that you would offer for a board such as ours that has been empowered to bring forth a report to the City Council of the City of Glendale of what the issue is and what potential solutions might be?
Maybe if you all could clarify for me. It was my underst... Are your pension assets managed by CalPERS?
Yes, yes, they are. So 100%.
Yeah. So the key issue for you all is, of course, is CalPERS. And so the key issue, the initial issue with CalPERS is lack of transparency. CalPERS is not transparent. CalPERS refuses to make documents available to the public, prospectuses, and other offering documents related to their investments. So you are essentially, imagine you're a retirement saver, and you hired a broker, a financial advisor, a money manager, to manage your money, but the money manager's not going to tell you how it's being invested. That's the situation you're in. CalPERS is not telling you how your money is being invested. They're giving you some information, which may or may not be right. The only way you can verify that the information they're providing regarding conflicts of interest, hidden and excessive fees, violations of law, are by seeing the underlying documents, the prospectuses, the offering statements, the subscription agreements, the limited partnership agreements. You are not privy to any of that. So at the get-go, your system makes no sense. You've hired, you've retained someone to manage your money, and they refuse to tell you or anyone else how that money is being managed. Where it is, is it in the Cayman Islands? Where is the money? Who's managing it? What are the fees? What is it invested in? This information is not available to you. And the lack of transparency at CalPERS is... Every public pension in this country has the same issue. Public pensions are supposed to be the most transparent pensions in the world. Every state has Freedom of Information Act laws, which are supposed to ensure that transparency. Every state, every city, every county in America has abandoned transparency in the last 15 years. 20, 30 years ago, when I got started, I could look at all of CalPERS investments and figure out what was going on. For the last 15 years, there's been a substantial movement away from transparency at the very moment that these funds, that these pensions are investing in the riskiest assets ever devised on Wall Street. The riskiest, the highest risk, highest cost, and most opaque investment. So issue number one is, if I was giving anybody my retirement money to manage, I would insist on transparency. You're entitled to see the prospectuses, the offering documents, et cetera. And of course, once you have them, you'd want to have them reviewed by somebody, or review them yourself. But the point is, you don't have them. And that, to me, is a fundamental flaw with the scheme that you participate in. Once you get into... So restoring transparency solves almost every other problem, because once you have transparency, you can see how the money is being invested. And you will find plenty of problems with how the money is being invested. The fees at CalPERS have skyrocketed in the last 15 years. They're up. While pension assets, as I mentioned in the books, you can have your money indexed for free, or 1/100 of a percent, one basis point. You can have your money put into an index fund that outperforms CalPERS for 1/100 of a percent. CalPERS is paying more like 2, 3, 4, 5, as much as 10% on these investments, hundreds of times greater fees than is necessary or prudent. So once you have transparency as to what the fees are, you would want to migrate to lower-cost investment. This is not just me saying it. Warren Buffett would give you the same advice. Invest your money in low-cost, fully transparent, highly liquid index funds. So that's another thing. Do you have another question?
Yeah, and look, I agree with you. If it were my personal money, I would certainly invest it in a different way. Unfortunately, one of the jobs this committee has, and the thing that I keep running up against, as one member, is how do we address that situation? If it were my own personal retirement, I would ask for the transparency, or I would fire and remove my money. However, we have agreements in place with CalPERS, and those agreements make it extremely difficult, short of lawsuits and legislative action, to remove our money without incurring costs associated with that. So I 100% agree with everything you've said thus far. I'm trying to figure out, however, what is the actual mechanism by which we would, A, enforce that transparency, and B, then move our money that wouldn't cost the city $2 to $3 billion?
Yeah, well, I can't tell you what devices you... Obviously, you'd have to bring a lawsuit or whatever. But what I suggest you do is to make this a very... Be very public with this issue. I would imagine that every city and county in California would agree that they would like... Who would vote to maintain secrecy? Nobody, except for CalPERS and the staff at CalPERS that have reasons for doing that. But my point is, I would make this a... I don't know if you have... If this could be an issue for the League of Cities, or however... Like I said, 30,000 people at school teachers in Ohio hired me to do an investigation to further transparency in Ohio, because it was important to them. And now 150,000 others are joining, and it's a much... So as a political statement, I would agitate for greater transparency. And I would join with other cities and counties in California and say, "Look, if we're going to be handing over money to the state, to these massive state pensions, we have to, as fiduciaries, know how it's being invested. We have to have transparency. We have to restore transparency." So I would make that a political issue, rather than necessarily litigate the matter. I would initially... Look, if you come out as a city in California that has thought about this issue thoughtfully and has concluded that you need transparency, that's newsworthy. And I would get the word out to other people about that. I work with media, I write for Forbes Magazine, among other things, but I work with media virtually daily. So I would say, look at the problem and come to your conclusion. you know, look at the problem and come to your conclusions and then start seeing if you can push that agenda out in the media. Um, I also would recommend that you do a forensic investigation into, I proposed to do a forensic investigation at CalPERS fifteen years ago. We put it out for crowdfunding and it was, we put the price very high because it was going to be a huge project. We probably should have broken, broken it down into pieces, but there's a lot you can learn about how CalPERS is managing your money without the cooperation of CalPERS. The forensic investigations I've done in Ohio and, uh, North Carolina, Rhode Island were all funded by participants without the cooperation of the pension funds themselves. The pension funds provided little or none documents, uh, particularly relating to the investment. So, as a forensic expert, um, I can piece together a lot of what's going on, even if CalPERS refuses to cooperate um, through, uh, alternative sources such as SEC filings and, you know, Googling things and, uh, a lot of information is on their website, but a lot is not. So it's sort of a, it's a connecting of the dots. So, so I, and I, in my books, I say you should investigate before you legislate, litigate or negotiate. So, if you really want to know, go ahead.
For, for posterity sake, what would, what would a forensic audit cost? What would you charge for a forensic audit of CalPERS? Just so that we have an idea of what that actually looks like.
Yeah, we won't, we won't hold you to it contractually.
What, what's that? What's that? I'm sorry, Mr. Holtzman?
I, I said, we won't hold you to it contractually, but it's, ballpark would be good.
Well, CalPERS is a massive fund and it would take quite some time. But what I would suggest, and this is what we did in Ohio, is, uh, put an initial budget of, say, seventy-five thousand dollars to begin looking. Because you can uncover an awful lot, um, early on. Uh, so, when I proposed to do a forensic investigation of CalPERS fifteen years ago, we put a price of seven hundred and fifty thousand on it because we were going to spend like a year and a half on it. Uh, but you don't have to do that to have a substantial impact. In Ohio, we did it for seventy-five thousand. We did it for months. And it's had a huge, oh, so in Ohio, for example, I completed my forensic investigation without the cooperation of, of the fund. Two of the board members on the pension fund agreed with my findings immediately. The state auditor then announced that based upon my findings, he was conduct, he is now conducting a special investigation of the hundred billion dollar pension fund. So, that's an investigation that was, that cost seventy-five thousand. I would say, um, you know, whatever, whoever you hire to do it, you, 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 you know, let's say it costs somewhere between seventy-five and two hundred and fifty thousand to do. A re- a favorable review, these funds generally pay like seven hundred and fifty thousand to get a favorable review. Uh, but, um, you know, you, you can have a, you can have a lot of insight. You can learn a lot by just having, you know, a forensic expert look at, uh, do an initial, what I call a peek. Uh, you can learn an awful lot just from a peek at what's going on at CalPERS. And also I would suggest that if you were to do this, to start it, other cities would probably join you in the effort. You put up the first seventy-five thousand and then if you want to go further, other cities can pony up some money as well. Uh, but again, like I said, investigate before you legislate, negotiate or litigate. Most of the time, no, all the time, in America, when anybody talks about reforming pensions legislatively or, or, or it's, you know, it's, it's, there's never any preliminary investigation. They fix the problem without knowing what the problem is. And as a result, the problem never really gets fixed. So, I would encourage you to, to investigate what is CalPERS really doing with your money? And by the way, I also, uh, wrote to CalPERS, I think fifteen years ago or, or more, saying, we would like to, to do a, a, a pilot program, a forensic program with CalPERS. CalPERS had, so they had no interest. Uh, J.J. Zalesek, who was on the board, he presented the proposal to the board. He said they had no interest in finding out what, uh, violations of law might exist in their investment program or, or any other improvements that a forensic investigation would suggest.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Milano.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Seidel, for your presentation today. I have, um, I have a couple of questions and let's see if I can formulate them such that I can summarize what has transpired and the reason why we have these meetings. Um, in the year two thousand and one, um, CalPERS encouraged, not just Glendale, but many cities, um, to, uh, accept and push for a change in the pension system to safety personnel and increase their pension by fifty percent. At the same time, they gave assurances, uh, to, as part of their, their presentations, I guess, that they would expect to receive a eight point two five percent as a discount rate going forward. In some of the documents that I looked at going back to two thousand and one, they pretty much stated on those documents as quoted by the city in their packet, given of the, during the consideration of the ordinance, that for the next eighteen years, the city would have zero costs. But if they accept this new package, meaning to the safety, increasing their pa- their pension by fifty percent, that there would be an additional thirty-five million dollars cost to the city, but that they would make a change to the valuation, increasing it to ninety-five percent from, from the previous valuation, such that the city would only have half that cost, around sixteen million dollar cost. In other words, in my opinion, when I read those documents, they materially misrepresented by both the valuation of the assets at the time of the year two thousand and one. Because there had been one year of losses in the stock market, which means that their assets had significantly been reduced by two thousand and one. And the documents that were used by the, that was used by the city to persuade the city council to pass it basically stated that the assets were significantly higher than the, uh, uh, than they actually were, that the amount going forward in terms of payment would be zero for the next six years. And what it has turned out for the city of Glendale financially is basically a one billion dollar, uh, financial hit. And that had the city has been paying through increased, uh, payments to the unfunded actuarial liability, uh, increased payments annually to the point where, um, the city now has a, a debt of six hundred and forty million dollars. And every increasing pension cost that were basically are, in my calculation, approximate almost fifty percent of its general fund. When you combine the payments that they make plus the actuarial, uh, liability that increases by about fifty million dollars a year. In other words, the city is in a serious financial situation. Now, had CalPERS maintained a, an eight point two five, uh, discount rate during that whole period, we would not have this problem. But they did not. So the question might be, well, did they mismanage the fund during all these years and are they liable? That'll be one question. Or even a more basic one, did they materially misrepresent all of the assurance that, that they gave the city staff, which in turn they gave to the city council in order to pass the ordinance? And if so, if there are potential for litigation there, significant litigation in order to, uh, sue CalPERS for their misrepresentation?
Let me, that's a yes or no question?
One of the things I'd like to do is I, in, in this book, uh, I ha- I put it, we, I put a diagram, I guess it's never going to show up here. But, um, anyhow, I, when I explain, uh, this is a chapter called Simple Truths, Understanding Pensions, that there, there are three components to the health of a pension fund. One is obviously how much money goes in for the contributions. One is how the money is managed. The second is how the money is managed over decades of time. And the third is how much money is paid out in the form of benefits. Most of the controversy regarding public pension funds in the United States focuses on money in contributions to the pension system. So that, uh, workers and, and often say, well, the city didn't make or the county or the state didn't make the required contributions. That's why the pension's in trouble. Other people focus on the benefits or the money paid out. The benefits are too rich. That's why the pension's in trouble. My forensic investigations have all found, coincidentally, that neither of those was, is true. There was enough money in the pension pot, had it been managed properly to pay the benefits, uh, that have been promised. So, the, the least understood, most overlooked part of the pension health equation is what happens to the money in the pot over thirty years? It's like a leaking bucket. You can keep pouring water into a leaking bucket and it's never going to be full. CalPERS is a leaking bucket. The CalPERS of today is very different from the CalPERS of two thousand and one. There, if, if you look at their, um, asset allocation, their, if you look at their portfolio, the portfolio is far costlier, far riskier and far more opaque. They, the pension has migrated substantially into what are called alternative investments. These are al- alternatives to the publicly traded stocks and bonds. So these would be hedge funds, venture capital funds, private equity funds. Um, these are the highest cost, highest risk, most secretive investments ever devised by Wall Street. And so, and, and so, it's part of the pro- another part of the problem is, these investments are virtually impossible to value. They're hard-to-value assets. So, while there might have been some uncertainty as to the value of CalPERS assets in two thousand and one, there is substantial uncertainty today because thirty, forty percent of the assets have now moved from, like, stocks like Amazon or IBM. You could look, uh, online and on your phone, second to second, and know what those stocks are worth. These private equity hedge fund other investments, it's, they're hard to value and, and the, the values are not updated regularly. So, the problem is much, much worse than it was in two thousand, two thousand and one, when you first got into, uh, this arrangement, uh, or, or when the, when the problems got, got worse. So, anyhow, the need to, to find out what's going on is much greater, um, because you said, you asked me the question, did CalPERS misleading you? Well, first thing I do is investigate to find out. I don't know if the CalPERS misled, misled you, but investigating is more important today than it, than it ever was because, uh, there is so much uncertainty. There's such, such a lack of transparency and these investments are so nebulous that it's critical, nobody can tell you what the, uh, what's many of these assets are worth. These, many of these assets could be worth, uh, half of what their stated value is or even less. So, anyhow, you need to look further into what's going on.
Okay, Mr. Zakarian has, has had hand up for a while and that'll be Ms. Wolfson.
Hi, Mr. Seidel. My name is R. Zakarian, Vice President of Glendale Firefighters Association. Um, thanks for being, uh, with, here with us tonight and spending your time here. Um, a couple of questions, um, and these are just questions to clear some, some, some stuff up. I don't mean to, uh, kind of get in the, in the weeds of it, but, you know, as, as you said, transparency and the fees and the, and, and all these different problems, are we preemptively saying that? You know, kind of, you know, agreeing with what you said is to investigate it first um, and do the investigation first, or are we preemptively as a review committee saying that they're not transparent? Uh, my next question would be, um, a lot of, I feel like a lot of the, you know, forensic audits, the credible forensic, forensic aud- audits that you've done have, have been great. Um, however, I feel like a lot of those had problems where people were not getting paid. You know, pensions and benefits were actually not being paid and that was the problem, which is why the teachers, uh, of Ohio brought that issue along and were able to get you and you were able to successfully actually prove that audit, successful that the wrongdoing was going on. Um, so yes, I do agree with you there that when there's something wrong, like benefits not being paid out, absolutely. Um, my next question is, is, you know, kind of goes back to preemptively saying that the transparency of it. Um, and if there is a problem, absolutely, let's find out what the problem is. And, you know, and even more so, maybe find out in the last fifteen years why any municipalities or any cities actually haven't done a review board committee like we're doing. You know, if they haven't found any problems, are we the first to ever, um, even think about investigating something, something like this and what, and why? You know, why would we be the first? Um, and to committee member, uh, Milano, the six hundred and forty million dollars in debt, um, I, I, I don't believe that's accurate because we had the CFO of CalPERS um, actually show up and a public benefits, um, attorney that was here and we kind of touched on what unfunded liability actually is. So that's six hundred and forty million dollars. As we put out here on live TV, I, I think is, you know, inappropriate, you know, before we do an investigation following what, um, what Mr. Seidel has, 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 has actually said is do the investigation before we actually make those types of statements. Um, so as, as, as far as that goes, it, it seems like at the end of the day that maybe the issue is with CalPERS and actually not with the city of Glendale itself. Um, and maybe, maybe I'm wrong, um, but these are just some questions that came up and I, and, and, and I hope you, you take that in the right way. There's just questions I want to get, get answers to if, if, uh, we can do it as a committee.
Well, the lack of transparency at CalPERS is well-known. I mean, it's, it's, it's not, uh, there's nothing preemptive. There's nothing, we're not speculating. If you don't believe me, write to CalPERS, do a public records request to CalPERS and request the underlying investment documents related to each and every one of your investments. You are never going to get them, okay? If you think you are, good luck. Call me when you do. I'll write a new book. Okay? It's never going to happen. Um, and part of the reason is because CalPERS has signed a lot of agreements with Wall Street saying they're going to protect this information from public disclosure. Uh, and CalPERS has been, uh, sued for these records. It's, it's a long history. There's no, there's no speculating that CalPERS is not fully transparent. It's, it's a well-known fact. And indeed, there's not a public pension in this country that's fully transparent today. So, uh, it's not just CalPERS by any means. So, uh, but I would encourage you, by all means, write CalPERS, say you want to. We can even give you the standard letters we send. Uh, actually, February nineteenth is the one-year anniversary of our public records request in Ohio. And in one year, we didn't get one document. Uh, we can give you that letter. The letters are all the same. Please provide all the following documents. You're never going to get them. But please do it. Uh, go through the motion and you'll, you know, I, I think they have whatever twenty days to respond or something. Uh, which they'll draw out or whatever for a year, but I would do that, uh, uh, if you feel the need, um, request the documents. Um, and, um, if, I'm trying to remember some of the, some of the other points you made. Um, but, I mean, we know that the, even the disclosed fees at CalPERS have grown exponentially. So, and you don't know, CalPERS doesn't know the full extent of the fees they pay. The problem with secrecy, lack of transparency in public pensions is twofold. One, One, the pension refuses to disclose to the public information about how the money is being invested. So the public is kept in the dark. But the other problem is the public, since you're not seeing those documents, the public can't judge whether the staff at CalPERS even knows what they're doing. So there's two aspects of the secrecy. One is you can't see the documents and two is you don't know whether the people at the fund that are actually doing their job properly. So yeah, anyhow, that's a very big problem. The fees have grown exponentially. They have acknowledged such, but again, I guarantee you that CalPERS is not disclosing all the fees that it pays. And I'd be happy to prove it if they'll give me the documents. And part of it is, many of these investments, nobody knows what the fees are. I've looked at investments where they thought the fees were one percent, the fees were actually seven percent a year, seven percent a year. If you're paying fees of seven percent a year, it's inconceivable that you're going to have net competitive performance, performance net of fees that keeps up with the market. It's like running in a footrace with sandbags tied to each foot. Now, you could win the race, but it's virtually inconceivable that you will. So those are a couple of them.
Yeah, thank you. Let me get to a few more people, Ms. Wolfson.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfson, and thank you so much, Mr. Seidel. I have to, first of all, say a couple of things. One is that I'm not feeling too great this evening. I have had a rather arduous few weeks and so I want to apologize if I look miserable. One other thing, two comments and then a question. The first comment I want to make is that I don't know about my fellow committee members, but my objective of being on this committee is for us to prevent a failure to pay benefits, prevent the city from being in a financial position where it cannot meet its obligations. So that's number one comment. The second comment I want to make is about CalPERS and their lack of transparency, which I don't believe is in question, and it is a multi-headed hydro and it affects a lot of other aspects of CalPERS's operation, not least of which is the board member election campaign finance, which is not made readily available. And that's pretty unusual, I would think. But to get to my question, you mentioned the League of Cities and so forth, and that's often been a thought that I've had is that we should be, you know, banding together with other CalPERS clientele because of ourselves, we can't exert much influence on them. Do you think that that a multi-city effort could have a better impact on CalPERS? Would we, by doing that, maybe? Because it, you know, it's always presented as like, well, CalPERS is the state and you can't do anything to make them function in a more efficient and better way. So that's my question. Thank you.
Well, at this moment, the head of the United States Securities and Exchange Commission, which is the nation's and indeed the world's premier securities regulator, is saying that these private equity and other investments need to be more transparent. You've got the regulator, the premier regulator saying, we need more transparency, and you've got every public pension in the United States fighting transparency. Now, how weird is that? Okay? So that makes no sense at all. So if cities banded together, you're the canary in the coal mine. You want to avoid a situation where the money's not available or benefits promised are not withheld. You can be the canary in the coal mine and say, we want to restore full transparency at CalPERS. And I wonder how many cities would say that's a bad idea? I can't imagine. I mean, it's, everybody in the world is in favor of transparency until they have something to hide. Let's face it. So I think an initiative, starting with you, going to the League of Cities, and also, by the way, I encourage people to contact the SEC and say, a situation where government employees are not allowed to see how their money is invested is untenable. It's, I can invest in any of these private equity funds and get the prospectus. But government employees' money is invested in these funds and they're not allowed to see the prospectus. That makes no sense. So it's like there's two stock markets. One for wealthy people who are allowed to see what the risks are and everything. And then for the rest of the world, schoolteachers, cops, firefighters, aren't allowed to see how their money's invested. So I would very much encourage you to reach out to League of Cities or any other groups. There's also the GFALA, Government Finance Officers Association. There's a lot, and there's all kinds of public pension groups. But I think that that would be a smart thing to do and I think that bringing this problem to their attention, to the other cities' attention, they would recognize it as a problem and I can't imagine that they would. The only person who's going to oppose transparency is CalPERS. They're going to tell you that if we don't keep the secrecy, we can't make the magic happen. Don't look behind the curtain, you know, because these best, if we can't keep the secrecy, we're not going to get the best deals out there. That's absolutely wrong. That's absurd. But that, CalPERS will push back and come up with every reason imaginable, but the ultimate reason is that investment performance will suffer if we have to be transparent. That's simply not true. And that's an untenable situation for a pension fund anyhow. If the only way you can make money on my money is do it in secret, then I don't want to be a part of it. That's what I would say. And it's not true. If you can make money, you can outperform CalPERS consistently by being in a simple index fund, fully transparent.
All right, let's, I think we have time for maybe one more question. And Ted, I'll say before that, that this has really been fascinating and I probably am going to be in touch with you to ask you some more questions offline as well. Okay, I sort of saw that Mr. Michaels was warming up to raise his hand and he finally has done it.
He's raised a finger. I hope it's not the one, the middle one.
I thought it was his hand.
Thank you, Mr. Seidel.
You're muted.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Seidel. I was following up with different avenues that you suggested. Following with the ABC, is there anything specific that you think we can follow or address? Or are these simply general recommendations?
Well, if I were writing that letter, I would write to the SEC. I'd say, Dear Chairman Gensler, we strongly support your initiative to restore, to have greater transparency in alternative investments and we believe that all public pensions should be fully transparent since it involves public monies. And that prospectuses and other information that's broadly distributed to wealthy investors should be provided to government workers who are investors in these same funds. And I would also say that, given the longstanding lack of transparency and pervasive industry wrongdoing, that you think that the SEC should investigate what's happened in the last fifteen years behind the curtain? I can assure you, a lot of bad things have happened, you know? If you give, that's part of this how to steal a lot of money legally. If you give somebody your money to manage in secret for decades, guess what? Some of it's going to be pilfered, squandered. So I would, I would say to the SEC that you have grave, you and other cities and states, other public pensions have grave concerns about the industry practices that have developed during this extended period of secrecy. So that's what I would do initially.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we had a clear direction or an action item that we can take and act upon and make that a recommendation from the committee.
The SEC, by the way, has a group that is focused supposedly on public pensions. It's run out of Boston, Massachusetts. I have brought board members, there, by the way, there are a lot of public pension board members increasingly coming forward as whistleblowers, concerned about what's going on. This is new. This is, I've told my friends in the press, this is really something they should write about. It's a new development. I've got two board members in Ohio, one in Chicago, board members in other states that I can't mention. They've come to me saying, we want to go to the, including board members in California, by the way. We want to go to the SEC and tell them what we're seeing that's disturbing. So it's happening. More and more board members are coming forward, well, secretly generally through the whistleblower program. But I think you could put together a compelling letter and you could take that same letter to the League of Cities and you could even take it to the FBI. So these are some of the people that are, the FBI is involved in investigation in Pennsylvania right now, as is the SEC. So, and also, of course, you've got your state attorney general would be someone I would include in that correspondence. Anyhow, that would be my initial thought. And if you want to do a forensic investigation, you could do that. That would make a lot of sense. I'm not sure I would want to do it. It's a lot of work, but it's certainly worth doing and it doesn't cost a lot of money at all.
All right, well, Mr. Seidel, thank you so much for joining us. You're very, very illuminating. We appreciate your time and we really appreciate your willingness to participate. And as I say, I'll be in touch because I have some more questions.
Okay, thank you all very much. I'm going to sign off now.
Okay, take care.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Wolfson, before you start?
Yes, sure.
I just wanted to give a clarification to Mr. Zakarian. He questioned my data. So I want to, basically, this is the CAFER, the latest CAFER, and here on page eighty-two, he can refer to that at the bottom of the page, is the six hundred and forty million dollars that I was referring to. So page eighty-two on the last city's CAFER that was issued last December. Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Wolfson, we have a caller on the line who's been waiting. May we please?
Sure, absolutely. I'm sorry, I would have taken that person before. Yes, please.
Mr. Moyle, you're on air. You have three minutes. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, committee members. My name is Mike Mohill. I'm glad we had an expert in the audience tonight, Mr. Ted Seidel. Wow. I hope this was an eye-opener for everybody in the committee as well as the viewing audience. The bottom line, in my opinion, is you can spend several hundred thousand dollars and do an investigation and at the end of the day, the answer is get out of CalPERS. Pay them off. Get a three billion dollar bond if that's what it takes, but get out and start a new pension fund. And in that pension fund, make it self-funded so the taxpayers are not on the hook for the failed investments of the pension fund. That's the bottom line to solve the problem. Why spend another five hundred, seven hundred dollars? We know the answer. Number two, we have a committee member by the name of Zare, how does he pronounce his last name? Amirian. How did he qualify to be on this committee? I looked at his records and he doesn't have a business degree, he has a political science degree. How does that happen? Hey, I have a geography degree and not a finance degree.
Mr. Mohill, I don't think it's appropriate to be attacking individual members of the committee. You have your First Amendment rights, but I just don't think that's appropriate.
Well, I think it is because he challenges, he challenges like Herbert Milano, who spent hours, Milano has been spending years doing the research on CalPERS and his man puts him down. Okay, that's what.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
Another point I'd like to mention, as you know, back in two thousand and one when this merry-go-round started, Councilman Gus Gomez, Dave Weaver, Bobby Sevian, Rafi Manukian and Ginger Brenberg was the one that started this whole thing. And it was introduced, the motion by Rafi Manukian, who today is the city treasurer. And then it was, you know, two weeks later, a council approved the thing with CalPERS and the merry-go-round to increase the benefits for our police and fire union. Why didn't you invite Mr. Rafi Manukian as an eyewitness and ask him, why did he approve this in the first place? He has a CPA degree. Why didn't he question this in the first place?
Vlad, is Speaker exhausted? Just three minutes?
I guess you want me to end this, but I have questions. I shouldn't like to have these answers. You know, Mr. Manukian is a sharp man. I know him personally. And why did he approve this thing? Okay, anyway, get out of CalPERS, the bottom line.
Mr. Moyle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I've lost.
Mr. Wolfson?
Yes.
Just to correct the record, I actually do have a business degree as well. So I'm not really sure where, you know, Mr. Mohill gets his information, but, you know, I've also served as Chair of the Audit Committee for the City of Glendale for the past seven years, so I'm very knowledgeable about the finances of the City of Glendale. Seven consecutive years and, you know, unanimously appointed by, you know, a bunch of lawyers and CPAs on that committee. So, you know, it's just, at some point, I understand, I understand the frustration that surrounds the community. I'm frustrated as well. I've lived in Glendale, you know, for thirty years. However, we have to, as a committee, ask questions about the mechanisms through which we would enact the change that is being requested and so loudly shouted for. And if Mr. Mohill wants to, you know, go and, you know, run political campaigns and get, you know, change the legislature here in the state of California so that the law changes, he's more than welcome to. You know, so I don't appreciate, you know, someone of Mr. Mohill's, you know, kind of very public background, you know, throwing stones, you know, when he lives in a very small glass house. So, you know, the bottom line is, is, you know, like we've heard and had our time wasted before, you know, a lot of these facts are just, you know, accusations without any type of evidence or faulty evidence and it's a waste of the time of this committee. Now, I appreciate you standing up, but, you know, I think members of the public should speak because sometimes they reveal their, you know, own ignorance through their words. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, again, I just want to reemphasize two things. One is we should be about the work, not about the individuals, and that's number one. And thing two is... And thing two, uh, is we have three speakers tonight as a, a record for us. So I really do want to keep things moving, which is partially why I'm pushing so hard. All right. Uh, next up, we are honored to have Marsha Fritz. She is a retired CPA associated with the California Foundation for Fiscal Responsibility. She was recommended very highly to us by John Kupel, the president of the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association. So hopefully we, we had some audio problems before. I'm hoping that Ms. Fritz is connected now.
Mr. Holzman, let me, let me read it into record for B presentation from Marsha Fritz Strategies, Strategies to Reduce Pension Costs. Thank you.
Ms. Fritz? Vlad, can you try to reach her on, on the phone perhaps?
Yes, let me try to do.
She does have a written presentation. And maybe while we're doing, waiting for that, uh, Luke, if you could maybe put up her presentation.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yay, yes.
Yeah, she had me on the cell, but I, I went back to the old, I hope this is okay.
It's fine. Yes. That's great. And we can see the presentation too.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm kind of going in the middle of your, um, your blue ribbon committee. I, I, I don't really know where you've been or where you're going. Um, I was just asked to just give strategies to reduce pension costs, what you should do. I looked at your CAFER, I looked at your actuarial reports. And, um, I just came up with some out of the box ways you can manage your costs. And just to give you a slight background, I did work with Governor Brown on PEPRA, designing PEPRA. I also worked with the Governmental Accounting Standards Board on, uh, changing the way we account for pensions, which unfortunately caused your pension costs on paper to increase because of the way CalPERS was, um, calculating the liability and the ongoing costs. It didn't change the liability or the cost. It were just reporting it much more accurately as a result of our efforts on changing the way we account for it. So while the first speaker talked about the asset side, I've been concentrating on the liability side. So the first, um, so the first slide, I've got five slides just that I can go through fairly quickly. So if the person could, that's, that's managing my slide, if you could go to the next slide, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
There you go. Let's see. Okay. First of all, if you really want to reduce costs, um, it's incredible the impact it can have on your, on your cost today if you can just simply encourage your workers not to retire early. One thing that I found in my research is that if we eliminated the 90% cap on safety pensions and the, and our safety workers continued to work, it would dramatically lower our costs. In fact, that bullet at the bottom, I found that by using, by using CalPERS assumptions, in every respect, the rate of return assumption, the wage growth assumption and the age assumption in terms of remaining, remaining life, that just by encouraging your safety workers to work an additional five years beyond their 90% cap, you would cut your normal costs in half, which is really dramatic. So how do we do that? One of the things we can do is to avoid and try to minimize your disability and your workers' comp claims. Those are the next two bullets on the top. Disability retirement and workers' comp are so beneficial tax-wise that it's, it's not a, a secret that you've got a lot of workers trying to get them. But what happens when disability claims are filed, it's at least at the, um, at the state level. I know with the, that it's kind of a rubber stamp. It's both a rubber stamp at the local level and often it's a rubber, rubber stamp at the disability claim insurance level. When a safety worker is able to file a disability claim, it's rubber stamped. And that is a strong encouragement to retiring early. So what I would, and you'd be surprised if you looked at the claims, how many of them were incurred from desk jobs. Often, um, workers in the safety arena, and I'm talking mainly, uh, mainly your law enforcement. Often they get higher and higher and higher and they start to take desk jobs. And you'd be surprised how many claims are filed from working in a desk, whether it's lifting a box, moving incorrectly on your chair. We've had, I've seen claims where people pushed back on their, on their rollers on their chair and fall over and they file a claim with a back injury, et cetera. Even though the claim was filed doing a job that at the, at that time didn't require use of force or something like that, because of the nature of a safety worker's classification, these, these disability claims are very easy to file. So safety engineers can really help you get your workplace or review it to see that these, that, 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 that these claims are minimized. Cause that can really reduce your early retirements. Obviously avoid programs that encourage early retirement such as DROP, which is a delayed retirement option plan. LA had that. I don't believe Glendale's that, got that. But that's where an employee, when they're getting close to their retirement age, their 90% cap, instead of retiring, the, the money that would normally go to their retirement is put into a savings account, which with a very attractive interest rate, and then they continue to work at a salary without earning extra retirement years. And then when they do retirement, that retire, that entire lump sum is paid to them in full. Don't go there. Absolutely don't go there. Another thing that causes early retirements or that can delay it, um, a lot, about 80% of safety workers. Now this is, my, my information's about five or 10 years old. About 80% of safety workers retired with spousal benefits. That's where you retire and then if you pass away before your spouse, your spouse continues to get the same pension to up until they, until they pass away. Often the, because the majority of safe, of safety workers, unfortunately, until we change demographics dramatically are male, they tend to, they tend to have a lower lifespan than their spouse. So the, the average reduction when you retire with spousal benefits is 20%. That's a, that's a big hit for people when they're working to take that 20% cut when they retire. So, um, so the, the more that reduction occurs, the less likely they're going to want to retire. So let's go to the next slide, if you, if you would, and I'll show you a little bit about one of the tricks you can, you can do. Determine you, and I'm, again, I'm talking mainly safety because that's where the pension problem is up and down the state is safety. And we're talking not, not the fires, firefighters as much as, uh, as the cops and, and policemen, you know, the sheriffs. Many safe, public safety jobs do not require use of force or pulling a hose for that matter. We're really, really focused in our cities on how many sworn officers have we got this year versus last year? What are we going to have next year? That sworn officers is kind of looked at as a badge of honor. And if we, if we reduce our sworn officer positions, we're looked at as being, uh, not really responsible for the safety of our people and that we, um, you know, that we're being light on safety and we're going with the defund the police or something like that. But the fact is, if you really look at every position in your, in, and you've got a very large police force. If you look at every position and exactly what they're doing, many of those positions do not require use of force. And really consider as your public safety start to retire, filling those positions without a sworn officer and instead using a civilian, you know, a miscellaneous worker, your costs of, of retirement grow down dramatically. Inventory every position to determine if use of force is a significant activity versus an occasional or very rare activity. Now, a lot of police departments are already doing this and I don't know what your situation is. And I'm hopeful, hopeful that you're doing the same thing. But if you've got a position that does not require use of force, except only occasionally or on a very rare activity, you might, uh, consider putting in a miscellaneous worker. And if they have to do that use of force activity for whatever reason, have them bring a sworn officer along to do it. We're finding a lot of, a lot of police forces are, are, are putting in a lot of, uh, mental health people, for example, on mental health. Uh, I, I forget what it's called, 503B or something calls where there's a mental health situation. And they bring them along. They're just as valuable as bringing along another deputy because they can handle the situation in a much more professional way. Not everybody can do a psychology exam and we can't, we can't expect our, our, our public safety workers to do the same thing. And just because someone is qualified and trained to use use of force, doesn't mean that their job requires that skill, skill set. And we had a situation in Citrus Heights up here, which is where my practice used to be located. We had a, a fire chief or a, a, a police chief bumping up to his 90%, very, very good manager. We moved him over to be the city manager. So he's, he's getting, he's going to get to retire. You can only in CalPERS retire once. You can't require, you can't require, retire as a safety employee and then go take a job as a miscellaneous worker and, and, and double dip. But you can, you know, stop your, your retirement accrual at that 90% of, uh, safety and then move to an administrative job, uh, and, and continue to earn retirement benefits with that, you know, with that miscellaneous worker pension. So you can, you can accrue two pensions, but you can only retire once. And when you retire, you mix, you, you have both a safety pension and a miscellaneous. And the key on this is you've got a lot of really good managers that are moving up in force. When they retire at 90%, you're losing that. They can be very effective in other positions. And if you can really move to trying to find another position for them to keep them working for you and delay that pulling down that retirement, the better you are. Okay. The next slide, please. Okay. Transfers in and transfers out. One thing, I didn't see that Glendale has a problem with this. You're, you're, you're doing pretty well. Some of the smaller, uh, police departments that I've seen have a, are having a real, real problem with people leaving their city and going to work for another city at a much higher wage. When workers transfer from one agency to another, the agency that they left still has the cost of the higher wage being paid by the new employer as a result, as it relates to the, to the work that they worked for that other city. So when you have transfers out, you're not, when someone leaves, you're still got the burden of that higher wage on the, on the years they worked for you. They don't stop when they transfer out. But when they, when you can get a, an employee, if you can hire an employee away from, from another agency at higher pay, then you get the benefit of that. So really look at transfers. Try to avoid having, having your workers transfer out. But by having other workers that are more senior transfer in, you can reduce your overall pension costs related to that employee by doing that because they're earning their pensions closer to retirement and you don't have the burden of all those young years. The, the worst time to lose an employee is about 10 years. They, you, they're, they're at the lower wage levels, that you're, you've had expensive training costs. And the pension costs start to explode after they get, reach that 10 years with step increases and wages. So really look at your transfers in and transfers out. I don't see that as a problem, but just be very aware of it in terms of your, when you encourage people to move to another city, for example, know that you're incurring a cost because especially if they're going to get a higher cost, higher pay. Okay. The next slide, please. Okay. Retiree health insurance drives retirement. This is probably the number one consideration. One of the big considerations that people make when they retire is what's going to happen to my retiree health cost? Now you've got, uh, public safety workers retiring in their 50s. They're, they're, uh, they've got quite a few years before they start to get on Medicare. And those, those retiree health costs are the highest they're ever gonna, are the highest in their, in their career as a worker that you're going to have to pay very, very high. Even though we, we take overall healthcare benefits, you know, the healthcare costs and, and divided by the number of employees. If you look at it on an actuarial basis, the retiree health benefit really explodes in the 50s on up to 65. And courts have ruled that retiree health insurance is not a vested benefit, even though, uh, they might've worked there. There it's, you know, obviously we, there's been some court cases on that when they've tried to adjust. But generally the courts have ruled that retiree health is not a vested guaranteed benefit. One thing that you might consider when you've got high-paid pensioners getting retiree health benefits is to modify the employee's share of the costs based on their overall income. Because you've got, especially when you've got employees with two or more pensions, you know, their spouse has a pension, they've got a pension and they've got asset income through, uh, estate, you know, inheritance or whatever. You might consider changing the formula on the pickup to make it a needs-based retiree health rather than just cross the board, no matter, you get it, no matter how opulent you are. And also discontinue the crazy benefits that I've seen. I've actually seen cities that are picking up the employee's share of Medicare taxes and, and the spousal retire, retiree benefits when spouses qualify for other employer health benefits. I've also, I didn't put this as a bullet. I've also seen crazy situations where many retirees, when they've got retiree health, will forego going on Medicare, which is crazy because you've already paid for that Medicare benefit. It's already sitting there. Why are your, would your taxpayers ever want to fund another insurance policy when they've got a duplicate insurance policy that the feds can pick up? So that's just, and retiree health is a big deal on motivating people whether they're going to retire early or not. If you make it not quite as attractive, you might discourage people from retiring early. Um, and I think that's the last, let's see, yeah, one more slide, just one more slide. This is a big one. Consider litigation on, you know, the earlier speaker, speaker talked about investigation before litigation. Well, I've investigated. Um, I've done my own investigation. I was a consultant at CalPERS before they even had the pension increases. We did an actuarial study, um, on staffing. I got very aware of how the benefit increases occurred in, in terms of legislation. I know exact, I, I know very well what happened. Now the courts have ruled against Orange County who sued that retroactive benefit increases granted to safety workers were illegal because they recreated liability without a vote of the taxpayers. That statement creating a liability without the vote of the taxpayers was denied by the courts because there, they said there wasn't really a liability. Um, and it did not, uh, retroactively, it, the retroactive benefit award did not violate the municipal bond debt limitation or gift of extra compensation. Now many, I, I disagreed with the prior speaker. These benefit increases actually did create a liability, an unfunded liability when they were granted. It's, it's absolutely provable. Um, and, but when that decision was made in 2011, we had not changed the, uh, the GASBY rules. And since that decision, GASBY changed its rules on accounting for pensions and did require that all municipalities, uh, reflect the liability, the unfunded liability on their balance sheets. So something new occurred since that decision was made. And that might be something that you and the League of Cities might reconsider is the fact that these retroactive benefit increases did, were a gift and created a liability. increases did, were a gift and created a liability that was unfunded by the taxpayers. And the recent, now, a lot of the people that got the unfunded liability have long since retired, most of them, especially in the safety arena. And I realize that that liability may, if you were to litigate it, it might be considered illegal. But the fact is, these workers worked an entire career, or many of them half a career, without a, under one pension formula, and then when they retired, and then, and then when they got a retroactive increase, they retired at a 50% increase, some of them. So that might be something when you get really desperate to take another look at because we've got a new GASBY that standard that was issued after that Supreme Court decision, and they can't say, well, there really wasn't a liability, they can't, we definitely, the accounting standards now reflect that if you create a retroactive liability and there aren't assets, surplus assets there to pay for that liability, then you have created debt, and the debts under the laws of California of that magnitude are required to be voted on by the voters. So these are just some ideas, and I don't know how much time I have, I see it's eight o'clock, but I will take some questions if anyone has any.
Yes, this is a good time for questions. Can you, Luke, can you take down the screen so that I can see people's faces? See, hands up. Do I have any hands? Mr. Milano.
Thank you very much. I think this is one presentation where I have perhaps seen a lot of new avenues for action. Thank you very much for the presentation, Ms. Fritz. I want to ask you a question with regard to another calculation that you did not include. And this is something that I pondered for a while and wonder if this is an avenue to have some type of reduction in the future benefits. And that has to do with the cost of living adjustment that is generally automatically given out. Because 9% of the cost of living adjustment is health, or health insurance, or health costs. Yet, we are, the city essentially is paying for that healthcare cost. And so, I was wondering if that is another area that we might want to look at, so that in the future, the city would have to reconsider the fact that the cost of living does not impact these employees the same way as it does other individuals who are not assured of a publicly funded insurance. So just on that alone, is that a potential area for us to take a look at all the components of the cost of living adjustment?
Retiree health is kind of different than the pension, but the benefit is a benefit. And I know from court decisions that medical benefits can be modified through negotiation. Pensions, we've gone through it. Once you make a promise to a public employee, which I think is madness, and I think it's right for litigation as well down the road, is that once you make a promise that first day, then you can't change it. But I think the cost of living, I don't understand why you would have a cost of living increase on a medical benefit since you're just simply paying for their benefit. So I don't know, unless you can make a negotiation in terms of the employee, the retiree pickup of their cost, you can modify that possibly.
Maybe I can ask you a question with regard to the topic that you presented directly. And I want to understand this, and I think if I understand the California rule, which says that once an employee is hired with a particular set of pension benefits, that the cities or the employer must abide by that. But I was just wondering, for all of those employees that were hired before, that you mentioned, and they had a 50% increase in their benefit, is there a possibility of challenging that interpretation?
Yes, and that was challenged by Orange County, and they did lose the lawsuit. But it was a very, but the judge's decision was based on the fact that they didn't consider a liability to have been created. And that was before we had the new accounting rules. So I think that should be revisited, honestly.
Mr. Amerian?
Mr. Amerian?
Somebody, by the way, is not, needs to mute, we're getting an echo.
Thank you, Mr. Holtzman, and thank you, Ms. Fritz. You know, as a 10-year, 11-year member of the Audit Committee, we are presented with reports about new GASBY proclamations that are going to affect reporting for the city. You know, you mentioned GASBY 67. GASBY 82, if I recall, in 2016 amended 67, 68, and one other of the GASBY pronouncements. Does that have any effect on, you know, what you're suggesting in terms of potential litigation?
No, it doesn't. The GASBY amended it to make it simpler because the original GASBY was very cumbersome, a bit cumbersome. So what they did was streamline it, but it did not change the fact that if you've got assets that are not sufficient to cover that present value of that liability, you've got a liability. And when you give benefits retroactively to your employees and you don't have the assets to cover it, that creates a liability. GASBY is very clear on that. It's very, GASBY is very clear on how to account for retroactive benefit increases. And it used to be that all we did was put it in a footnote. And now, GASBY came out and said, if you've got, if you've incurred a liability, you put it on the balance sheet of that city.
And maybe this is a follow-up for, you know, city staff. I'm fairly certain that, I remember after those GASBY pronouncements, the city's net position being amended or reflecting some of those changes, but would, you know, would you care to comment, either Mr. Tautaion or Mr. Bradford?
Certainly, Mr. Holtzman, Mr. Amerian, members of the committee, that is correct. Based on the GASBY pronouncements at the time, and the year escapes me, we had to do a, what is referred to as a prior period adjustment, and recognize that liability into the net position. And that is, that is a correct statement. It did lower the net position of the city, in accordance with the GASBY regulations.
Mr. Holtzman, if I could also add to that, I want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding with respect to the city of Glendale's specific situation as it relates to retiree medical. And that sort of ties into the GASBY pronouncements and the way that we were accounting for all of this. The city of Glendale has never provided retiree medical for any of its retirees. However, based on the way that we had to, based on the fact that we had allowed retired employees to remain in the existing pool with active employees, there was an implied subsidy. To Ms. Fritz's earlier points in the presentation, that was not a vested right. We recognized that it wasn't, and we actually were able to eliminate that entire structure and unblend the actives and the retirees, thereby eliminating our entire OPEB liability. So I know we've talked about that once before. That was done in 2015. I just wanted to make it clear that that was not a situation present in Glendale today.
Thanks for that clarification.
You're muted, Mr. Holtzman.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Let me just say that the city is unusual, maybe even remarkable, in that, in the fact that it doesn't have any OPEB liability. That's, many cities have OPEB liabilities that are 50% of the size of their pension liabilities. So, anyway, Mr. Kadeke.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Fritz. That was a very good presentation, and I'm particularly interested in all the different suggestions that you provided. However, they are broad, and I was wondering, where could we go to investigate and get details on how we can implement some of these suggestions?
Well, I know, I don't know. I know Orange County has some, some people that worked on that litigation, the first litigation. You might start with Orange County, if you're looking at challenging the retroactive benefit increase as being legal or not. I wasn't aware of your retiree health, and I applaud Glendale for not having OPEB. That's very, very rare. As far as the use of force, I think you need to work with your police, your managers in terms of trying to look at how you can have an afterlife for your sworn officers to encourage them to take, or groom them, frankly, for positions that will keep them on the job and delay their retirement. If there's a way you could do that to make it attractive for them, to not leave when they hit that 90%, your money ahead, in, you know, filling those, filling other positions, there's a lot of skill set in these, that these officers have, that's going out the door when they retire. And I really think maybe working with a human resource manager or someone like that would probably be something that you really should look at the after-retirement for these public safety, because that is what's killing you, is your public safety pension cost. I can see that immediately.
Okay, thank you. Retirement for safety folks, you know, past the sort of 90% threshold makes sense. But at the same time, you said that you should avoid drop programs. And so, two things. One, I'm not sure the committee has really talked very much about drops, so it would be helpful maybe if you'd explain that. But second, I did have a question about, because I do have actually one client that has a drop program, why that doesn't accomplish the same purpose of keeping people, I mean, effectively, a drop program keeps people on for longer.
Yeah, the reason it doesn't work is because you're actually, they are retired. You know, there's retirement money being put away into another account. The way a defined benefit plan is, is you don't want them drawing on that account, you want, you want them to not retire, and that reduces your cost. So drop does the opposite of that. It does retire them. And it's just that they're not, the money is put into a separate fund, like a savings account.
And Mr. Holtzman, just for the record, I want to make it clear that this particular program as well is not one that the city of Glendale employs.
Yeah, I understand. I just was curious because, couldn't help it, but I have another client that has a drop program, so. All right, I think if we have no more questions, we have a third speaker. So, Ms. Fritz, thank you so much for your time and for your thoughtful presentation. We really, we really appreciate it, and it's very kind of you to spend your evening with us.
Mr. Holtzman, one comment with regards to the OPEB liabilities. Glendale eliminated them as soon as GASBY rules changed. It wasn't just because it was the right thing to do. The rules changed, so we either had to show it on the book or we had to eliminate them, just for the record.
I'm sorry, I got to jump in there. I mean, there was a policy choice by the council at the time, and it was a very, very, very difficult choice to make. And they made it, so I was there. It was not a pretty meeting. And I just, I have to speak for the council that took that action and say, they did take the action to do it, and they had choices. They could have put it on the books and reflected it as an under-net position, but upon the recommendation of the city manager at the time, they chose not to do that.
Thanks, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, so let us move on. We have Suzanne Harrell. Hang on, give me one second. Suzanne, are you more less connected?
I'm here.
Oh, excellent.
Mr. Holtzman, let me read this into record for presentation from Suzanne Harrell, pension obligation bonds. Thank you.
Great. So, Ms. Harrell, hang on a second, let me just get her bio up. Excuse me, just, uh, just, one second. Luke, you want to, are you looking at it here?
If I may, Mr. Holtzman, I can go ahead and read the bio.
That would be terrific, I'd really appreciate it.
Do you have that presentation, Luke? Are you going to share the presentation, Luke?
I have a PDF version of the slide deck. I don't actually have the PowerPoint version.
Okay, I can go ahead and share it then. Just by, you know, just introduction, Suzanne Harrell is the Managing Director of Harrell Company Advisors, has 30 years of experience in all aspects of capital financing and financial analysis. Firm specializes in financing cities' special district capital improvement projects, economic development, infrastructure. She's been doing this since 1988, and she has acted as a financial advisor on over $7.5 billion in total financing for public agencies up and down the state of California, including tax allocation bonds and lease revenue bonds for the city of Glendale. So with that, let me go ahead and get the presentation up, and I'll turn it over to you, Suzanne.
Great, thanks, and nice to see all you committee members. I do want to start out by asking, I know it's 8:15, so I do have about 20 slides, so I want to ask kind of what your, the timing is, and I'll know kind of how quickly to kind of go through and maybe where to, which slides to spend more time on.
Well, I thought that, I'd warned the committee members we were going to run long tonight, so I was thinking we would try to wrap up a little after nine.
Okay, that's fine.
We should have plenty of time. And this is a very, very important pension obligation bond, something we've been looking forward to hearing about for the entire time with committee's men in business, so we're very interested.
Yes, and I think the report that kind of goes with as a companion to the slide presentation, it really just has the write-up about what we're talking about tonight, has been circulated. So, Jason, are you doing the slides? Oh, great. Thanks. So just an overview of what I'm going to be talking about this evening. First is the impact of the changes at CalPERS for fiscal 20-21. I think a lot of the information that you've had has been up until the last valuation, which was June 30, 2020. After that, we'll talk about your net pension liability, some ideas about how to develop a unfunded actuarial liability policy, or UAL policy, and ways that you can reduce the pension liability. So, next slide. So the two really significant things that happened in 2021 were the fact that CalPERS had a 21.3% investment return, which is 14.3% over the target rate or the discount rate of 7% at the time. And so we're making an estimation about how much that is going to increase the market value of your assets in your, in your two plans. And in total, right now, at June 30, 2020, the market value is a million, excuse me, a billion five. And so the gain, or the amount above the required 7% target, is probably going to add about $215 million to your market value of assets, which of course reduces your unfunded liability. The other thing that the CalPERS Board did was reduce the discount rate from 7% to 6.8%. This is in accordance with, they have a risk mitigation policy. And so this was the minimum amount that they could reduce it, was from 7% to 6.8%. And that actually increases your unfunded liability as you reduce the discount rate. And so in total, you can see I've broken this out between the miscellaneous plan and the safety plan. And in total, that will offset some of that investment gain to the tune of about $58 million. Of course, these are just estimates, and they're based on information that's available. But again, the, it may change when they actually produce the report next June, but these are pretty easy estimates to follow. Next slide. So this just kind of summarizes where the UAL would be under your, the existing valuation in total $668 million. Add back the discount rate reduction, reduce uh, reduce for the investment return. And so the projected UAL at June thirty, twenty twenty-one, assuming no other actuarial changes um are made, will be about five hundred and eleven million dollars. And so that'll increase the funded ratio. Um, you can see on the slide there, um, hopefully you can see on the slide there, uh, the funded ratio uh kind of combined between safety and miscellaneous will improve from about sixty-nine percent to about seventy-seven percent. So I thought I'd start off the report tonight with a little bit of good news. And so, there you go. That's my good news for tonight. Um, uh, and as we get through this presentation, we're gonna talk about um UAL bases. So, uh, unfunded, the unfunded actuarial liability is a total of changes created year by year, and each one of those years is a UAL base. So that twenty-one percent rate of return, that's gonna uh reduce your um your unfunded liability next year, there'll be a June thirty, twenty twenty-one UAL base for that, you know, two hundred and fifteen million. Um, and so each, and then each of those UAL bases is amortized over a different period. Now, um, PERS has changed their methodology for amortizing different kinds of bases. Some are created from when they change the discount rate. Some are created when they change benefits, when they change actuarial assumptions regarding like mortality uh or the cost of living. Um, uh, some are are caused by investment gains and losses. And PERS had a very different way of amortizing each one of those um different kinds of changes. They've kind of gotten to the point now where they've um where everything going forward is gonna be amortized over a twenty-year period, so that's good. Um, but because they amortize them uh the existing bases over different periods of time, creates this very uneven repayment or payment to PERS uh for your annual UAL. Um, what I've pasted here on the bottom, this is uh an appendix in in the report, but you can see that it's just kind of a example of how, you know, uh, how PERS uh provides in the report, you know, how much uh what each each base was, when it was created, how much it was created, what the payment is in this year, what the payment is next year, and so forth. So, next slide. So when I was talking about that uneven amortization of the different bases and when they're created and when they get paid off, it kind of gives you this uneven payment uh uh liability to PERS every year. So the red line, this is the miscellaneous plan. The red line on this graph is from the June thirty, twenty twenty valuation uh before the investment return um of twenty-one percent. Um, and you can see that your payments started to go, you know, were gonna go up for a period of years, and they were gonna drop down because there was one of those UAL bases that got paid off. Um, then it starts to creep up again because some of the UAL bases increased by the cost of living every year. And then finally, you know, some, a a big, a a big amount of the base got paid off, and then it kind of declines over time. Based on the projected changes in the valuation, um, we have the blue line. And so that's what um we would project your UAL payments would be going forward every year. Now, of course, this is, again, no more, no other actuarial changes, and this assumes a rate of return equivalent to the discount rate. So assumes a six point eight percent rate of return on your investments. As we know, every time you don't achieve the six point eight, whether above or below, that's gonna create a new UAL base. Um, next slide. So this is, this just shows, uh, staff had asked me like, right, so it's great, we went from the red line to the blue line, but what if PERS only earns five percent next year instead of the six point eight required? So the green line shows you that, you know, you might have to give back some of that, the, you know, the, what you've achieved um by the twenty-one point three percent investment return if, say, for example, PERS only earns five percent next year, and that's the green line. Um, and so we have the same uh chart here for the safety. So, um, and again, I I I didn't give the numbers on the previous slide, but for example, the total payments for safety using the twenty twenty valuation were six hundred million dollars over this twenty-two-year period. Um, using the twenty twenty-one projected valuation, uh, the total payments are only four hundred and fifty-one thousand. So it's about a hundred and, sorry, four hundred and fifty-one million. So it's about a hundred and fifty million dollar improvement or reduction in the total payments. Just again, this is a snapshot point in time um for the June thirty, twenty twenty-one estimated uh UAL. And again, this is a similar slide that shows, you know, how much you would give back of of the um of the improvement if the twenty twenty-two valuation uh had only a five percent rate of return. And that, again, that's the green line. And this is just the combination of the two. So the, in in combination, the twenty twenty actual total payments over the twenty-two years are a billion, one hundred and seventy million. And then with the twenty twenty-one projection, uh, it's reduced to eight hundred and one million. So that's about a three hundred and sixty-nine million dollar improvement or reduction in your total payments. Again, I just want to make sure this is, we're all clear that this is a point in time and assumes no other changes going forward, and the discount rate and the investment return are the same. Uh, so now we'll change um from that topic and just talk about your net pension liability. So the city has established a section one fifteen trust, and I understand that you you've had a presentation about a section one fifteen trust, so I won't go into too much detail about what it is. Um, it is separate and apart from the CalPERS assets. Your June thirty, twenty twenty-one balance was thirty-nine point eight million, which is almost eight percent of the uh projected uh UAL um at June thirty, twenty twenty-one. And it does, uh, it's used, it's an asset in your in your audited financial statements. It is an asset, and so in effect reduces your uh net pension liability because it's in an irrevocable trust that can only be used to pay either the UAL or normal cost, normal pension costs. Um, and so part of having this section one fifteen trust is the city, you know, we recommend that the city develop a UAL policy, uh, what to do with this section one fifteen trust money. And typically, you know, you put, set the money aside in good times to help when uh the pension costs start to increase exponentially or or more than, you know, the cost of living or, you know, your revenues are going up. And so typically, we would draw down the section one fifteen trust money to smooth out that um the CalPERS UAL payments. You remember the the graphs that I showed, where, you know, you have uh payments going up for a period of time and then down. And so typically, you draw out some of the section one fifteen trust money to kind of, um, you know, smooth it out or cut off the peak of those payments. Um, but you, you know, you'll, you should develop a UAL policy regarding how much to deposit, if any, into any more into the one fifteen trust and when to withdraw it. And sometimes, you know, the deposits are determined during the budget year, or maybe when the, when the audit fund balances are available. And you might draw down uh money out of the one fifteen trust, maybe to pay a current, a portion of your current UAL payment, so that's budget savings. Or you could even draw it down to fund additional discretionary payments, uh, what we call ADP, uh, to CalPERS. Um, next slide. So this is an example that we put together, and I hope you can see it. But um, it's kind of an example of how you would draw money out of your section one fifteen trust. So, um, the first uh column here is the projected UAL payment, and I'm showing the twenty-one dash twenty-two projected payment, which is about fifty-two point five million. Um, because, you know, one of the things you can do is you can say, well, we want to cut off the peak payments, and we only want to pay uh going forward in our budget, um, you know, no more than fifty-two million five hundred. So if you adopted that policy starting in twenty-four, twenty-five, you might draw seven, seven million, seven point one or seven point two million out of the section one fifteen trust to reduce this uh, the fifty-nine million point seven down to the fifty-two five. Um, or you can, you know, a couple of other scenarios, you could draw, say, two and a half percent of your annual UAL payment and um and make an additional discretionary payment to PERS. And what we did was, we put together kind of like a a an idea, like if it was a two point five percent draw or a five percent draw in the columns to the right, and then what that um that would do to your section one fifteen trust balance. And we just did it for a ten-year period, but um, you know, at the end of June thirty, twenty twenty-two, your thirty-nine point eight million, uh, I think uh this year that your section one fifteen is probably gonna earn about six percent. Uh, so it'll be forty, about forty-two point two million on deposit by the end of this year. So I just show the accumulated balances. Um, and you can see, you know, in the different scenarios, you know, one, one, you end up with fifty, fifty million dollars left in the trust. In ten years, the other's forty. But again, these are just examples of how you might use that one fifteen trust. I think you need to kind of look at different options and decide what works best for the city. Other ways to reduce your pension liability, um, CalPERS has a fresh start program. Again, you can make these additional discretionary payments, whether you make them out of a one fifteen trust uh as the source of funding, or you make them out of your regular budget uh every year, and then um you can issue pension obligation bonds. So uh, I won't belabor the CalPERS fresh start option because I'm, I think you may have heard about it before, but in the event you haven't, um, what CalPERS does is they have a program to roll up all of the UAL bases into one number, one net number, uh, because some, you know, there's pluses and minuses uh for each base. And then they amortize it at the six point eight percent discount rate, but using level payments over a period of ten or fifteen years. Um, with the new valuation changes uh that are expected to come online next year, the fresh start doesn't quite save as much interest uh cost as it might have um in a prior year. Um, and then again, because of the uh significant credits for those investment returns last year, that's actually gonna shorten the miscellaneous, the final payment for the miscellaneous plan. Um, again, uh, assuming no other changes in the future. Um, and so again, the shorter the um expected uh UAL payment schedule, the less uh the fresh start is going to save you. The other thing is it does lock in, lock you into a payment schedule if you choose a fresh start option. You can't choose the fresh start and then revert back to uh the old payment um scheme. Um, next slide. So this is kind of just an example of what the fresh start option looks like. Uh, again, combined for both of your plans with the projected uh um reduced uh UAL payments. So uh, the total here is eight hundred and one uh million dollars in total projected payments under the existing payment repayment schedule. Fresh start, it would be about seven hundred and seventy million. So you're saving about thirty-one million dollars. And you can see that there's um a lot of savings uh in the first couple of years, but then you're paying more in in the next um uh twelve years than you would have paid under the existing um repayment schedule. And then you have all your savings at the back end uh in the last, um, in the last seven years. Um, additional discretionary payments. So again, you can uh draw money from your section one fifteen to make additional discretionary payments, or you can uh use just budget savings um on an annual basis to make them. Um, the city did make ADPs in fiscal twenty dash twenty-one, and you can also apply them. You know, we talked about those UAL bases, and they all were created on in different years, and they have different amortization periods. Um, you can choose which of those bases that you want to apply your additional discretionary payments to. And uh you can choose, you know, bases with a short payment um repayment schedule. You can choose bases with a long repayment schedule. And then, you know, you can generally replicate that fresh start uh repayment um schedule that we saw on the previous slide, using ADPs by just kind of making the extra payment that you would have made under that ADP schedule. And it, you can pretty much replicate that if you, you know, without locking yourself in. Um, so pension obligation bonds. So uh pension obligation bonds are POBs. They get, they're issued to prepay, you know, you can pay all of your UAL, you can pay a portion of your UAL, you can pay UAL from one plan and not the other plan. Uh, so there's a lot of flexibility in in determining how much uh, if any, that you want to prepay. Uh, the bonds are issued at a taxable interest rate, and they're based on the city's credit rating, which right now is a double A plus issuer credit rating. And so POBs are 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 really looked at as a debt management tool. You're refinancing those payments that are calculated by PERS with an implicit six point eight percent uh interest rate at a lower rate of, right now, I calculate that to be about three point oh seven percent. That's the city's taxable borrowing costs at a double A plus interest rate um as of last week. Um, and the idea is that you establish kind of a level payment uh structure similar to the fresh start, so that's a, you know, easy budgeting because it's a level payment. And then it decreases over time to match the decreasing uh uh UAL payments you would have made to PERS. Um, some of the misconceptions about POBs, you know, POBs, again, are a point in time. They only pay off the existing UAL and allow you to restructure the payments that that PERS already has you on the books for, right? Um, they do not, uh, they, they have nothing to do with prepaying any future bases, because every year, a UAL base or a UAL credit will be created from either investment returns above or below the six point eight percent target, uh, changes in COLA, mortality rates, uh, employee retirements that are different from their actuarial assumptions, uh, and future changes in the discount rate. So those will happen whether or not you issue POBs to pay off your existing liability. They'll be added in the future, um, either to debt service or to your um uh existing UAL base. So, you know, the GFOA has uh uh several areas of concern about POBs. Um, but the one that is really the important one is the CalPERS rate of return risk. So if you think about it, under the existing amortization, um, you know, you have eight hundred and one million dollars of payments over time to pay off about a five hundred million principal um liability. And so under that, uh, every year, some of that eight hundred and one million is applied towards the print, you know, towards principal, paying down the five hundred and one, and the rest is applied towards interest. And so every year, you're giving PERS a a portion of the principal payment. The POBs pay all the principal in year one of whatever you've just, you know, however much you've decided to prepay. You're paying that all in year one. So having, so what that means is you've given PERS more funds earlier. And so more funds on deposit earlier, the impact of those investment returns is gonna be magnified compared to putting a little bit in of the principal in on a year-to-year basis. Um, and so any increased UAL, because they have investment returns below the target, kind of diminishes the budgetary savings that you might uh expect to receive from issuing a POB. So this is kind of just a a very basic slide to kind of just demonstrate what this risk is. So on the left-hand side, we've got, say you have a million dollar uh principal UAL, and every year, a hundred thousand of that gets applied towards the uh to to the repayment of that UAL. So every year, PERS has another, an extra hundred thousand dollars of your money in the investment pool. So every year, PERS has another, an extra hundred thousand dollars of your money in the investment pool. On the, on the right hand side, this is, well, we're giving PERS the million dollars all upfront in year one, and they have that for all ten years. And so in this example, the first year, say PERS has a five percent rate of return. The difference between the six point eight percent required and the five percent is one point eight percent times the hundred thousand. The new UAL base created is eighteen hundred dollars. On the right hand side with the POB, PERS has the, has a million dollars of, of funding. One point eight percent of that is eighteen thousand dollars. And so I've kind of given the example of, you know, over time, kind of different investment rates here, we have, in year five, we have a higher than six point eight percent rate of return. So you can see that losses early on are magnified under, under a POB scenario. Again, so in this case, on the left hand side, you'd be amortizing a, a net UAL of eighteen hundred dollars. On the right hand side, you'd be amortizing a net UAL of twenty four thousand dollars. And so that's what I'm saying. When, you know, this rate of return risk diminishes the, the savings you might get from issuing the pension obligation bonds. This is kind of the example, the, the twenty four thousand greater than the eighteen hundred. That will go against any potential savings you might see from a POB. So I think this might be the slide that everybody's been waiting for. So the gray bars on this slide, now this is assuming you're, you prepay a hundred percent of your unfunded liability at June thirty of twenty twenty two. So the gray bars are the payments that you would be making to PERS. And that's the total of the eight hundred and one million over the, over the twenty two years we've been talking about. And so the blue is the debt service on the pension obligation bonds. And you can see that in total, it reduces the payments you would make by about a hundred and fifty five million dollars. This is today's interest rates and, and, you know, the future, PERS always earns six point eight percent rate of return and the discount rate is always going to be six point eight. So again, it's the, the savings are calculated kind of as a point in time. And so that's kind of what, how the savings are generated. So all the savings are upfront and that hundred and fif- a hundred and fifty four million dollar savings, that's what's at risk of being reduced by future PERS investment returns being below the six point eight percent. I did give you a little idea about the sensitivity of pension obligation bond, the savings based on interest rates, because we've all heard interest rates are going up. So if we use just today or last week's rates, the budget, the budget savings, kind of the base that you're starting from, hundred and fifty four million effective rate, including costs to issue the bonds are about three point oh seven percent. And that's about a nineteen percent reduction in the payments. If rates were to go up a quarter of a percent or point two five percent, the savings would be reduced by about thirteen million. And so now you're down to about seventeen point seven percent reduction in, in payments. Because there's a pension obligation bonds take a little bit of time to issue, sometimes up to six months. You know, I, we added a, a, a column for what if rates are one percent higher than they are today? And then, you know, the, the reduction in the savings is fifty million. And so the, the total savings are only a hundred and, and four million dollars. And the, the percent reduction in the UAL is thirteen percent. So this is a situation where, you know, if it's below fifteen percent, I don't think anybody would ever proceed to issue a POB unless the save, the projected savings were more than fifteen percent. And again, it's because you want to mitigate that risk, that reinvestment risk or the CalPERS investment rate of return. So the POB process, like I said, it, it takes a little bit of time. Sometimes it can be six months because there's no voter approval acquired for a POB, but it does require something called a judicial validation that the UAL is an obligation imposed by law. And again, that judicial validation can take, sometimes it takes four months. I've, I've seen it where it's, it's, it's taken two and a half months. I've seen it where it's taken four months. And so that entire issuance process can take about six months for a POB. And so interest rates are subject to change and, and, and fluctuate during, during that time. The POBs do not require a, a lease of assets to secure the bond payments like the traditional city lease revenue bonds that the city issued to build the police headquarters. So I know I went that, that pretty fast. So I'm going to take a pause and, and ask for questions and comments.
I'll start just, and then it looks like we have a couple other hands. So I'm, I'm, I'm curious about, you didn't show a scenario where in addition, well, where CalPERS lowers the discount rate to say six point two. And how would, how would that affect the efficacy of a POB?
Well, again, there's, there's probably a hundred scenarios.
Yeah, no, I understand.
With investment rates and discount rates and so forth. But actually, PERS reducing the discount rate, while it increases your upfront liability, it actually reduces the risk that the, that they don't earn their target.
Right.
Rate. And so it's kind of, it's a, you know, on one hand, it increases your liability and that's a bad thing. On the other hand, with a POB, the rate of return target is much lower. And so the, the, you know, ability to succeed is, is higher.
All right. I think I, let's do some hands. Okay. Mr. Milano.
Let's see if I understand this correctly. We, irrespective of which route we take, whether we increase some funding towards the section one fifteen trust, or whether we go with a bond, we're still in a hook with regard to CalPERS performance. So just the fact that we had this twenty, I'm sorry, this forty, twenty one percent return last year on funds doesn't necessarily guarantee that we're going to keep anywhere close to that in the future. In fact, we may actually have a investments that may be overvalued.
Well, again, I think the twenty one point three percent, it kind of has given you a little bit of breathing room, right? To make, to take a little bit more time to make some decisions and recommendations. Because we all know that there, you know, it's unlikely they're going to achieve a twenty one point three percent rate of return anytime soon. But we just don't know what it's going to be.
Yeah. So we're still on the hook with regard to their performance in the future, for which we have no control. That's pretty much the bottom line. And on the other comment that you made with regard to section one fifteen being a budget savings, I, I don't understand how that could be a budget savings. If we are taking money out of the budget to put in a section one fifteen trust this year. And then in the following years, we use some of that money to basically pay off the additional charges or the additional fees for CalPERS. How is that a budget savings? We're paying it now.
Well, it's just, it's a budget savings in the year that you draw it out, right? I mean, you don't, you don't have to draw it out.
It's not a budget savings in total, because we're actually paying for it.
Right. You've set the money aside in a good year because you had some surplus.
Oh, I see. Assuming that we had a good year.
Yeah, assuming you had some surplus, you know, you set it aside for that purpose. Yeah. And when, the year that you draw it out, you get the budget savings because instead of putting fifty nine million dollar UAL payment in your budget, you're, you're only budgeting the fifty two million and you're budgeting.
I, I have to quibble with the, with the term budget savings because it's, as far as I see, this is no budget savings whatsoever. So you're basically paying it out of the budget. The, I may have other questions, like, I'll let other people ask questions first. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Michaels, I could, I could tell you were, you were, you were getting ready.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to talk about the, the fresh start program. I know you had your recommendation. And just to conclude that you don't think it's a good option because we can achieve those goals by paying additional amounts in early without being locked in. I just wanted to try and get a point of action on that issue first.
Yeah, I, I mean, it would not be my first choice to do the fresh start because once you, once you opt for the fresh start, you're kind of locked into that fifteen year payment schedule. And so if you have some situation where you're having a really bad budget, you know, crisis, you still have to make the payment. Whereas if you're just making it every year as an additional discretionary payment, if you do have a budget crisis and you can't afford to make the extra payment, you, you don't. But you can, like I said, you can pretty much achieve the same thing. It's, it's like if you had, you're getting a mortgage. And, you know, you want to get a fifteen year mortgage, but the better idea is to get the thirty year mortgage and make additional payments every year so that you pay it off in fifteen years. Because again, if there's some crisis and someone loses their job and they can't make their, you know, the, the, the higher mortgage payment based on the fifteen year maturity, they've still got the ability to go back and make the lower thirty year mortgage payment. Is that a little bit easier analogy?
Yeah. No, that, that was my understanding. I just wanted to make sure that I was correct in that. And looking at, when we were talking about pension obligation bonds, there also is the one fifteen trust. And those funds be used and drawn upon to pay for losses or essentially underperformance at the time. And as an additional payment, try and offset some of those larger losses that within compound.
Yeah, you can do a couple of things with that one fifteen trust money. You can, you can draw it out and give it to CalPERS in kind of a lump sum, right? To offset, like if there's a big UAL base that's created from a poor investment return year, you can give it to them in a lump sum to do it, or you can give it to them over time. I hope that answered your, I'm not sure if that answered your question or not.
Believe it did.
Let me ask. This is, this is a little theoretical, so see, I'm not, not positive if it's in your bailiwick or not. But there's been some discussion throughout about the possibility of withdrawing from CalPERS and paying, you know, essentially two point eight billion dollars, something like that to withdraw from CalPERS. You know, as between that and essentially paying off your entire unfunded liability, whether it's through a POB or whatever, knowing full well that the difference is that you pay off your whole unfunded liability, but if, if CalPERS underperforms, you create new unfunded liability. Whereas if you give them two point eight billion, you never have to worry again. What, what, what's your thinking between these two options?
Well, do you have three billion?
I'm not, I'm not confident we do. It has been an act of confirmation. So I'm curious what you have to contribute.
I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's fine. So I'm a little, I, I didn't mean to be.
No, I understand.
But if you pay off, that's, that's true. If you, for the privilege of not being subject to CalPERS rate of return risk, it does cost you three, four times the amount of the existing liability. And so that's, you know, that's definitely something you have to weigh is that worth is paying four times the current liability worth eliminating all that risk? Because you're going to have to have some sort of new pension benefit to attract new employees and keep your current employees. And so, you know, it's, you're still going to have to pay for pensions even after you've extracted yourself from PERS.
I've awoken the bear, Mr. Milano.
Thank you. This is, I'm just trying to put together her previous comments.
But again, my, my, my position tonight is not to make a recommendation to do one or the other.
No, that's, that, that's fine. Thank you. It's just that I've, I, I look at the UAL as being this, this number of which we have no control. And the valuation, which I consider it inflated because I consider the stock market inflated. So I think that all of the valuation is inflated. But if CalPERS is willing to say, oh yeah, this is real and, and our unfunded, uh, actuarial liability is only like five fifty, well, then this is the time to do it, right? It's three times five fifty, right? Or four times five fifty. In other words, it's a two billion dollar bond. And actually, this may be the best time to actually get, get out of CalPERS. If, if my logic follows what you just said. If they're going to overvalue the, the, the assets and then make the UAL based upon that number, by all means, let's use that number. And let's, let's get out of CalPERS under, under those conditions if we can manage to pull off a two billion dollar, you know, foundation.
If I, if I may, if I may just speak to Mr. Milano. The numbers that, that Ms. Harold showed is the UAL. As we saw in a, in a, in a previous presentation, when PERS calculates their exit or termination liability, it's a much larger number. They use a much, much lower, lower discount rate. So even though we had one good year at twenty one percent, the exit liability is, is, is going to be significant, maybe not a billion on the dollar.
Would it be a factor of the UAL? Like a multiple of the UAL?
It's really kind of not. It, 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 it's complicated, actually. Not, not to add fuel to your fire, but actually it, it's based on a, an average of the ten and thirty year treasury bills, which, which actually may be going up, which paradoxically could make withdrawal relatively cheaper than it is right now. But although it'd still be a huge, it's, no matter what, it's going to be a huge increment. I mean, I've never seen their withdrawal number under three.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford.
Over three. Mr. Kadekian.
When I was advocating for withdrawal from CalPERS, I was consistently advocating not to simply just pay whatever they ask. I always said we should fight. I never said we should just turn down, put our belly up and let them go for the jugular. I don't know, nobody seems to have the guts here to fight CalPERS and that's fine and I understand it. And maybe I'm the only one here. But look, CalPERS, in my opinion, is not trustworthy. And it's one of the most abusive relationships this city has ever gone into in any other organization. And sometimes it's better to just pay and get out of an abusive relationship, just linger on and suffer for the long run. That's just my overall opinion about CalPERS.
Can I ask? You know, I gather that there has been a bit of an upsurge in the number of jurisdictions that are doing POBs, you know, in the last few years. What's your, what's your impression of that?
Well, I have to say, as interest rates go up, you saw what happened in the interest rate sensitivity analysis. Your savings today would be nineteen percent. You know, if rates go up a percent, it's thirteen percent. When POBs kind of started becoming very popular in, say, two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty one, you know, the savings potential the, of the deals that I worked on were, started out in like the twenty eight percent range because rates were so low. And so as we compress between that taxable rate and the discount rate, the savings get lower and lower. And I really think there, you know, we're seeing less and less of them being done. And again, each, each plan, like there's, there's actually more savings to be had in your safety plan than in your miscellaneous plan. So I'm just kind of giving you the blended average of the two. But your, your miscellaneous plan, based on the new projected valuations, you know, that's going to fall, slip below, say, a fifteen percent savings pretty quickly with a fifty percent or a fifty basis point increase. So I see as rates continue to go up, I see pension obligation bonds becoming less and less popular. Just because you're not really, there's not enough mitigation against that rate of return risk, that future rate of return risk.
And, and what about, what do you see in terms of? And, and what about, uh, um, what do you see, uh, uh, in terms of people um, issuing P O Bs for the full amount of the U A L versus partial?
Um, you know, again, it, it, it varies plan by plan. Um, and, um, I have done probably half of the ones that I've worked on have done a hundred percent. Um, and half of the ones I've done have tried to fund their P U, their U A L up to about ninety percent or, you know, fund ninety percent of their liability. So their U A L is ten percent, uh, at the, at the end of the day. So it, it really, again, it kind of just depends on what the issuer's kind of goals are. Um, they want some savings, but they, you know, they don't want to pay all of the money into, into CalPERS. They kind of want to do additional discretionary payments to kind of dollar-cost average their deposits into PERS. The, the problem is with P O Bs, the amount of the P O B issued has to all go to PERS under, to meet the legal requirements. Um, so some cities have done fifty percent of the U A L one year and then two years later come back and done the other fifty percent, just again, to kind of average the, the, the rate of return risk at, at PERS.
So is a possibility then of, of, of deciding to issue bonds, but only issuing, for example, half of them at one time and half at another? Or is that how it works?
Exactly. Once you get the validation from the court, it allows you to issue them at any time in any amount into the future, uh, for, for the U A L. So, um, you know, the validation is good for, for, to split it up if, if that's what you want. And again, you can start the process and go through the validation and you get to the end of validation and interest rates have gone up so much, it's not cost-effective anymore. And you just stop. You just never issue the bonds.
Other questions? All right, well, uh, looks like, uh, thank you so much for this great presentation. Really, really, uh, I, I love the clarity, uh, with which you present your material. Uh, and it's, um, really, really moves us along here, uh, and appreciate your help very much. You may be hearing from me, I may have more questions.
I appreciate your kind words. It's very nice because it's a very difficult topic to, to.
Uh, I think you've done great. I, I work with Bartel a lot and, and I, I, I love them to death. But I think you've, you've clarified it at a level that goes beyond Bartel and that's a high compliment in my world.
Yeah, I know Mary Beth well, so.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you, everybody. Uh, I think we, uh, I'm trying to see what else we have here. Uh, the reports were for information only. Um, the ARS one fifteen trust fund policies and then the city attorney's uh, uh, opinion on the Brown Act. Uh, are there any questions from, uh, the committee on these? Mr. Milano?
Yeah, I've, um, I wanted to, uh, make a suggestion whenever we go through a, a meeting like a very productive meeting like today, that at the following meeting, we, uh, um, we have an opportunity to, you know, we come back with additional comments so it can be agendized or our perceptions of what we, we've just received. We cannot always come back and instantly and say, oh, wait a second, here's an idea that I, we can tie in some of these opportunities. But I've, um, we haven't done that in the past. We sort of like go through the minutes. You know, we read them, say, accept them, and then we go on to the next topic. But I think we need it, we need some, uh, time to be able to bring back these issues and maybe with the help of the staff, we can address some of these, uh, questions that may allow us to, uh, to start defining as we're coming, you know, to, to the close of, of our sessions. We start defining what really are our significant opportunities for us to address the problem. And I think we're getting close to that, to that phase. Um, I just wanted to make sure that we have time to be able to, between the members of this committee and the city staff, to be able to start putting together some of the questions that we still need clarifications on.
Uh, that makes a lot of sense. Let me just say, though, that, uh, next, uh, well, it's March seven, uh, Rick Cole is, is coming.
Oh, fantastic.
So you, you might, you might want to, you might want to wait.
Sure. Yes, I agree.
So, uh, and Mr. Cole, among other things, has actually, uh, I think chaired the committee very much like this, uh, elsewhere. And, uh, so I think he's going to add a lot to our conversation. But I, I understand your point. I think it's right. I, I just think it's going to have to be after Mr. Cole. Uh, Mr. Michaels?
Following up on Mr. Milano's point, I wanted to go ahead and discuss when the next executive board meeting would be scheduled. I, you know, I want to again push on discussing the report and the format that we're going to put together and begin looking at how we are going to collect the feedback and start organizing that into the committee's report.
You know, I, I think that's a great, great question. And I, I think it might be very helpful to have an executive committee meeting between now and the next, next full committee meeting. It seems like it would make a lot of sense to me. I, I know, uh, uh, John, your, your first reaction is going to be, how are we going to find s- space in the, in the, in the TV calendar uh, for this? But, um, I think if we could arrange one, it'd be great. Um, uh, if it has to be after the seventh, probably not a disaster in my mind. Uh, but I, I think it would make a lot of sense so that we could talk about forming the report.
And I think it might actually have to be at a different time, uh, maybe in the mid-afternoon, um, to be able to, be able to, uh, uh, televise it as well. Uh, which is similar to what we've done with executive committee meetings in the past.
Yeah.
So, uh, if that works for everybody, then, uh, we can go in and look for some dates uh, and send out a note to the committee members, the executive committee members tomorrow and try to pin down a, a date between maybe now and the seventh.
Terrific, thank you. All right. Uh, okay, uh, uh, Vlad, I, I know I got ahead of you with the reports, my apologies. Uh, the, um, any, any other comments on, uh, reports? Anybody on the phone?
We do not have callers at this time and let me read the report into record. Five A, ARS one fifteen trust fund policies and five P, city attorney, alleged Brown Act violations. Thank you.
Mr. Amerian?
Yes, I, I just wanted to briefly, uh, thank the city attorney for his memo and just also, you know, draw attention to the fact that it, again, unfounded, you know, accusations with absolutely no evidence. Um, and the implications of that unfounded accusation actually impact the entire board. Every single one of you were implicitly accused of, of, of somehow, you know, um, trying to, you know, um, you know, commit some sort of Brown Act violation. And, and it's obvious, you know, most of you know that, um, not only due to the, the city attorney's report, but also just me telling you that, you know, I haven't spoken to any of you, I don't think, ever, um, you know, outside of this, this board. But, um, you know, uh, again, as we move forward, and I will bring this up in the executive committee as well, as we move forward, uh, we do need to start focusing in on the actual issues um, rather than, you know, what, what has been kind of the, you know, practice of a couple of the members of, of the board in conjunction with, uh, one very vocal activist in the community, uh, of trying to muddy these, these waters. So, um, I hope the rest of the board, um, you know, will at some point have the opportunity to chime in about, uh, that issue so that we can focus on getting, uh, a report that reflects the actual consensus of the committee rather than just, uh, you know, a, a couple of members who have spent an inordinate amount of time, um, speaking their opinions. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but, you know, if, if we're just moving on from accusatory tone, suggesting couple of board members, maybe you want to give names so that we're not all thinking we are some of the couple of board members here.
Mr. Kedikian, are you, are you, are you talking me?
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm talking to the whole committee. You accused a couple of board members about doing whatever it is. I'm not sure who are these couple of two board members you're talking about? That's my question. Because, you know, we just moved past this accusatory tone of people accusing this and that and you just turned around and did the same thing. That's all I'm saying.
No, uh, uh, look, uh, and, and I don't want to, I'll, I'll reference you, Mr. Holtzman. You know, I, I've made my, uh, uh, opinions to you and to the board extremely clear about the process through which we've gone. Uh, you know, uh, I mean, I, I think, I think not only speaking for myself, but, uh, you know, a lot of, uh, a lot of people have been very patient. Um, and if you actually go and look back, you know, as Mr. Kedikian, you know, is, is, is referencing, if you actually go and look back and actually try to time out the, uh, the contributions, quote unquote, of board members, uh, there are, it's, it's very easy, it's no secret. There are, there are two board members who have, uh, you know, I think had an equivalent of, you know, twenty-plus percent of the entire time this committee has met, um, giving their thoughts and opinions. Uh, and so we've been very, uh, you know, uh, very, um, I don't know.
Patient was a good word.
Yeah, patient, uh, thank you, Mr. Bean. Uh, and, and I just want to make sure that as we get to the end of this process that, uh, you know, it's not, it, it doesn't become another, uh, distracting waste of time uh, once it becomes a very clear that those board, those committee members are in the minority in terms of their opinion. Thanks.
Uh, I, I, yeah, one more comment and then we're going to go.
So, this is, this is a, um, I, I will take, for example, um, I know that I have spoken a lot about many of the issues and asked a lot of questions. The, um, I find out of interest, for example, that I remember would complain about the fact that we're asking questions that are tangible, uh, that merit, uh, investigation, the merit clarification, for example, like the section one fifteen trust. Now, Mr. Amerian did not ask a single question, not one. And I paid attention to that during that presentation, not a single one. There was also another presentation with regard to the, how the management of those, uh, funds were going to be, uh, executed, for example. And I did not ask all the questions that I should have asked at the time. You know, but yet no other questions were pertinent and there were some that were very, very relevant, right? Like putting a dollar sign to the actual management costs or whether the management costs were done irrespective of whether we, uh, gain on those investments or lose on those investments. There are a lot of material issues that pertain to how a fund like that, whatever, forty million dollars is, is being managed and how much is getting paid. Right? If the manager is going to pay two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, I want to know like how many transactions. I could have asked a lot more questions that are relevant to that. And we cannot confuse asking pertinent and relevant questions about an issue and then complain that, you know, we're taking up too much time. The whole idea about this thing is to challenge, to ask questions so that everyone who does not ask the questions will then say, oh, wait a second, I hadn't thought about that. The, um, if we're going to go move forward, we have to move forward and not come back and basically take up additional time in making invalid generalizations. Don't make generalizations.
Mr. Holtzman, if I may, just, just very briefly, I have no issues with questions. I don't think any of the board, the committee members have any issues with questions. What we do have, what I have issues with, and I suspect based upon my observation is that there are, you know, people are tired of hearing three-minute summarizations and opinions about what, the same thing over and over again before a question is asked. It happened again today, we sat quietly through it and, and, and waited for it. So, you know, I have no issues with questions. Um, I hope that, you know, all of the committee members ask questions. I love questions. They, they should be questions. They should start with a what, where, why, when, how, and then end with a question mark. Not with a two-and-a-half or three-minute soliloquy that inserts their opinion, accusations based upon, uh, you know, uh, you know, faulty information and then, uh, you know, a, a token question at the, at the end of it.
Fine, give us some examples, please. Give us some examples.
Hold it, I'm going to cut off this conversation. Uh, uh, look, we've.
You make generalizations, I want examples.
No, look, uh, I'm not, we're not going down this rabbit hole any further. I should have cut it off earlier. Um, you know, can't say it enough times, but there are, you know, good members of this committee who, um, frankly, don't like the level of hostility on, you know, I'll, I'll say either side, although arguably it's a, it's a multi-sided cube. But, uh, you know, um, we're about a serious business here and there's just no place for uh, the kind of personal attacks that are going on and, and they just have to stop, honestly. It's, it's, it's a discredit to, I mean, we just had a very good session with three really good speakers, really interesting material, you know? And it undercuts the credibility of what we're doing, you know? If people think that they were spending all our time fighting among ourselves. So I, I, all I can say is, uh, we, 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 we just have to move forward. Uh, and, um, I, I understand there have been accusations in all kinds of directions. Uh, I'm not naming this at anybody in particular. I just think that, um, uh, you know, we have to be sensitive to, you know, people who are here who do not want to hear this kind of colloquy. Uh, and I don't think it does the committee any good. So, uh, I really would appreciate it if we all frankly suck it up a little bit and, and, and just, and just move on and, and do our work. So with that, uh, thank you, everybody, and we'll see you, uh, in two weeks.
Uh, may I please have a motion and second to adjourn the meeting?
I motion.
Second.
Uh, we're adjourned at nine fifteen P M. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.